Good evening and welcome to the December 9th work session of the Mayor and City Council. Tonight, we have five discussion topics, all of which are committee briefings from some of our very favorite committees. You know, I can get away with saying "some of them," because we have a lot of favorite committees. Our first briefing is coming from the Senior Advisory Committee, and we have Marlene Schmelneck, who is the Vice Chair of the Committee, and Tim Smithy, our Community Facility Manager. Take it away.
Good evening, Mayor Ashman and Council Members. I'd also like to acknowledge tonight, we've got a couple of our committee members in the audience, Mary Huffrick and Yvette Monroe, and we've got Carolyn Bass, who's our Committee Chair, with us tonight, too, and some seniors from the Senior Center.
Welcome all.
All right.
We thank you for the opportunity to provide an update on our committee's activities over the past year and share our thoughts about the future. Our mission is to provide input and guidance on senior matters to the Mayor and City Council by, one, determining the needs and concerns of the senior citizen community in the greater Gaithersburg area via discussion groups, outreach surveys, and other studies as necessary; two, proposing, recommending, and supporting projects, programs, services, activities, legislation, et cetera, for Gaithersburg citizens aged 55 and older. During 2019, we built on last year's momentum and have continued to work as a re-energized team. Rebuilding our committee is a priority and an ongoing effort, as we deal with the unique realities of maintaining a committee comprised of seniors, with individuals leaving the area, facing major health challenges, traveling and pursuing a variety of leisure and family activities. Ultimately, we look forward to improving the gender, racial, and ethnic makeup of our committee to more closely reflect Gaithersburg's diversity. This past year, we developed a high-level plan outlining a committee or subcommittee structure that could be implemented over time at the Benjamin Gaither Center as the membership grows. Currently, there is one committee, the Welcome Committee, whose function is to greet and orient new members. Future committees or subcommittees may include, one, an outreach committee to recruit new members; two, a hospitality committee to support major events; three, a kindness committee to provide comfort to members experiencing health challenges; and four, a healthcare advocacy committee to promote and campaign for senior healthcare initiatives. So we have a blueprint for the future, including a draft mission statement and potential duties outlined for each committee. This plan was developed as a result of analyzing the Senior Advisory Committee's 2018 brainstorming list of suggestions for the center. On closer examination, it was apparent that either the staff or the existing Welcome Committee were already handling many of the items on the list. The remaining elements of the brainstorming list were organized into the future committee structure we just reviewed. Our final 2019 objective was to improve the image of the Benjamin Gaither Center, both the public image of the center and the appearance of the facility. Examples of modest but impactful improvements include the installation of a modern water fountain that functions as a traditional water fountain, as well as a water bottle refill station. In terms of decor, silk centerpieces have been added to the dining room, perking up the dining tables. In the main lobby, we have consulted our membership, and a gallery of framed Welcome Signs that reflect our many languages has been added, giving us a feeling of unity, as well as a great conversation starter and attractive focal point for the reception area. The image of the center has been enhanced by adding new evening and weekend programming for active seniors, such as monthly happy hours, all at Gaithersburg establishments, of course. Our evening galloping gourmet dinner trips and occasional dinner dances at the Benjamin Gaither Center are marvelous fun activities and have become popular events. In addition, the center has leveraged its social media presence on Facebook by posting humorous videos entitled "Hey Jerry" to help spread the word about the center and allow members and their families to follow events at the center. For 2020, we have several objectives. A few are continuing from 2019. As mentioned earlier, rebuilding our committee is an ongoing objective. We will also continue to work to improve the image of the center, as we endeavor to understand what a modern senior center represents in 2020. Our emphasis on continuing our social media presence is primary. We will strive to add new and increasing numbers of evening and weekend events to appeal to a growing number of very active seniors, who are living longer and working to not only maintain, but also improve their health. At the same time, we are mindful that we need activities that appeal to all of our members, aged 55 to almost 100, with varied interests, mobility levels, strengths, and needs. Pursuing cosmetic and functional upgrades at the Benjamin Gaither Center is a continuing goal as well. While we greatly appreciate the existing facility, we feel it's important to continue advocating for a new freestanding senior center. This is a major capital investment for the city and requires a long lead time for implementation, so it's not too early to begin thinking about a new facility. Our last two objectives for 2020 tie to the broader aspects of our mission statement. The scope of our mission is not limited to the Benjamin Gaither Center alone. We would like to contribute questions to the city's biannual citizen survey, so that we may gain a comprehensive understanding of our seniors' needs and concerns. Finally, our last 2020 objective is to partner with the Montgomery County Commission on Aging to support its annual public forum. The Commission advises the county executive and council on senior affairs in the county. Earlier this year, the Commission proposed that our committee join with them in support of its annual public forum, formerly called the Stakeholders Forum. Our committee agreed this invitation was consistent with our own mission, and we look forward to interfacing with the Commission in planning and executing the forum, which will be hosted at Bora Park in March 2020. We have several requests for you, two are short-term and one long-term. Short-term, as I said, we would like to participate in the 2021 Biannual Gaithersburg Citizen Survey. This existing survey process will provide an objective means to gather data about seniors' needs and concerns, rather than relying on our own observations and individual feedback we may happen to receive. It will help us take a broader look at our senior population, especially those who may not participate in the programs that the Benjamin Gaither Center offers. We currently have no other reliable means to access this population and collect this type of information. Our second short-term request is to continue pursuing cosmetic and functional upgrades at the Benjamin Gaither Center until a new senior center can be approved and constructed. Enhancements needed include new bathrooms, flooring, updated artwork, and fresh paint in a variety of appropriate colors to perk up the building, possibly even adding a wall mural. Sprucing up the site will enhance the experience for our existing membership and help provide a good first impression as prospective members tour the facility. Replacing the existing flooring with a modern product that's environmentally friendly and easily maintained will enhance the building's interior. Areas of the existing floor in the main exercise room and central hallway are bubbling up due to moisture accumulation from multiple floods and leaks. Providing an appealing environment that encourages people to socialize is an important and powerful necessity for seniors that research has shown can positively impact health status. Along these lines, we are pleased about a proposed project, hopefully to be implemented in FY '21, that will provide access to the building's existing garden courtyard by creating a new gate to this outdoor amenity for our members. Our long-term request is for the construction of a freestanding replacement for the Benjamin Gaither Center. The existing center is landlocked, aging, dated, and limited in appropriate space for staff, programs, and visiting healthcare providers. The existing structure was built in 1983, so the building is 36 years old. Because of this, we have persistent maintenance challenges. The original building's infrastructure, such as the HVAC system and plumbing, for example, were not designed for the current use of the facility, contributing to our ongoing issues. The existing building was constructed as a hotel. Subsequently, the hotel was converted to residential apartments, and a portion of the first floor became the Gaithersburg Senior Center, which opened in 1991, 28 years ago. Around 2006, the city began doing some preliminary planning for a new 35,000-square-foot standalone senior center elsewhere in the city. Unfortunately, this project was never realized due to the economic downturn in the 2008-2009 timeframe. In 2015, a more modest capital investment was made to the existing center. The scope of this project did not include upgrading the interior decor, but did involve adding a gym, a computer room, and an exterior access ramp. While this was a positive step and enhanced the site, it was not a comprehensive project, and many issues remain. In fact, the age, size, and layout of the site and building make certain needed improvements unachievable. For example, the addition of a covered drop-off and pickup area is likely not feasible in the current location, but is a feature needed and appreciated by seniors. Likewise, additional room for programs and activities is not possible in the current location. The size of the facility footprint has been maximized at 12,000 square feet. Due to lack of space, our own Senior Advisory Committee has begun meeting in the recreation room of the Diamond Square Apartments. Furthermore, the senior population is expected to grow disproportionately more than the nonsenior population. Approval of additional senior housing, such as Hillside and Washingtonian North, attest to this trend. Another trend is the desire to continue living independently with programs such as The Villages, supporting seniors in meeting this objective. With more senior residents, more senior housing, and longer lifespans, we need to begin planning for a new freestanding facility to meet the needs of this growing population. This past summer, the park's recreation and culture element of the city's master plan was updated, and now proposes a new Gaithersburg Senior Center in the foreseeable future. Senior population growth and increased use of the current facility will drive more demand for senior center space. Not long ago, we had our highest one-day attendance of 194 people ever in the history of the senior center. Average daily attendance this year was 135. The chart compares average daily attendance and total annual attendance for 2019 and 2015, which was the year the Benjamin Gaither Center was renovated. There has been nearly a 30% increase in attendance over the past four years. As of June 30th, we had 677 members, with 73% being female and 27% male; 60% were Gaithersburg residents. The chart on the right shows the age distribution, with nearly half of the membership in their 70s. The average age was 76. Eligibility for membership begins at age 55. FYI, our oldest member is 97. This map shows the June membership displayed in terms of members per square mile. Darker purple areas indicate dense membership of more than 100 members per square mile, while the lightest lavender areas show less than 14 members per square mile. The white circles represent a one-mile and two-mile radius from the facility. Most city members live within a two-mile radius of the center. Membership is especially dense west of the facility, adjacent to Quince Orchard Road, and east of the center near Routes 117 and 355. We also have concentrations of non-city members in Montgomery Village and Germantown, which is not on the map. Here are pictures of some of our members having fun at the center. The picture at the bottom right highlights our gallery of Welcome Signs in various languages, which was mentioned earlier as one of our 2019 beautification projects. Before we hear your feedback and guidance, our committee would like to thank Smitty, Carolyn Ryan, who is Acting Director of Parks Recreation and Culture, along with the staff from the Benjamin Gaither Center for the marvelous job they are doing. We are fortunate to have such a remarkable team of dedicated and talented people supporting Gaithersburg seniors. We would also like to invite the Mayor and Council to participate with our seniors at our next dinner dance featuring 60s and 70s music. We expect to have a fun time and would love to see all of you there on March 20th. Now, we're happy to answer any of your questions.
Marlene, thanks so much. Excellent presentation, very substantive, a lot for us to think about. Certainly, it's been on our mind for some time. When I first came on the City Council in '07 to, I guess it was '09 when the county backed out of what used to be an agreement that we had, where the county was helping to offset some of the funding of staffing at the senior center. To 2015, I guess, is 2015 when we rebranded as Benjamin Gaither Center?
Yes.
I guess before the county backed out of the longtime deal they had with us, there was a serious look at a new standalone facility. And then everything, since the economics so dramatically changed without the county's involvement, we changed our approach, and we decided to invest more short-term in the facility we have, which we're proud of. But, you know, I think we all recognize that this is a growing demographic, it's a growing need, and probably will be something we need to seriously consider, again, sometimes sooner than later. We do have a couple of, we do have a bunch of big capital projects, including the new police station, the new park over off Route 28, and others. So it could be a little time before we can reasonably start paying, you know, or saving for this, since we're pay-as-you-go. But it's definitely, I mean, I think everybody up here probably agrees that this is a growing need, and we would like to have a standalone facility at some point. In terms of the short-term, painting and bathroom replacements and mural and that sort of stuff, this is a question for Smitty. You know, we're not at budget time quite yet, but you're probably sort of looking toward the FY '21 budget process. Are these sort of things going to be included?
They're going to be proposed. We also have the money coming from Washingtonian North coming at some point in FY '21 that we're hoping to use for these projects, so...
Great, great. Well, thanks, and thanks to all of your fellow committee members, the ones here and the ones not here, because we appreciate all the good work that you do. Who'd like to, Lori, and let me start with you, since you're the liaison.
Thank you, Mayor. So, thank you to Marlene for the wonderful presentation. I have been the liaison for the past year and a half. Haven't had a chance to make it to very many meetings with the new job, but I stay in contact with the meeting minutes, the very thorough meeting minutes. Smitty is just a welcome presence there, a great leader, and he gets along so well with all of the members, and they all know him so well, and if he's not there, they want to know why and how he's doing, so I'm glad to see you here. I really enjoy the Welcome Signs that were developed. The membership with the center is very diverse, and so making sure that everyone feels like they have a place there is a really great progress that's happening despite the surroundings. I know that other things have been done to spruce up the place. I don't know if you mentioned the touring of the other senior centers that you all did.
Yeah, we did that last year, so I know that was in last year's presentation.
Okay, good, 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 good. So, you know, I'm looking forward to seeing what the numbers look like, maybe working with Tom to see what old inventory we have. You know, there's very limited space to build anything new here, but, you know, we do have Lake Forest Mall that's coming, so we can always think about things and spaces in that way. And so, yeah, I also think the expanded programs and hours was a great improvement. I know that it's very limited when you only are able to schedule things during the daytime. You know, there are some people who don't always come during the daytime, and they want to come out on the weekends, and we want our residents, especially our seniors, to not be shut in over the weekends, and so I'm glad that we're expanding those activities. And, yeah, anything else that we can do to support this group, I'm glad to see that the numbers are growing and love that we continue to get people who are interested in continuing to participate. And I see a lot of familiar faces, so it would be nice to have some help. You guys do so much with the limited resources you have, and so I just appreciate that this is still a thriving community and program there. So, thank you all for everything you do. And Carolyn, welcome.
Who'd like to do next, questions, comments?
Go ahead. Well, I'll echo what's already been said, and thank you all so much, not only for a great presentation tonight, but for the great work that you do all year long. Obviously, it shows the commitment and the passion that you and the entire committee have for this important work, and I hope it's a reflection to everybody watching and to everybody who experiences or interacts with our senior services, whether it's through the Benjamin Gaither Center or any of our other great programs, you know, how much we try to prioritize the importance of these kinds of programs in our community. And I can't think of anything more quintessentially Gaithersburg than to have a kindness committee. I think that's so great, that you're doing that and that you're looking at other ways to have committees and subcommittees within the structure of the organization to focus on these specific tasks, and that's really terrific, and that's thinking outside the box, I really like that. You talked about the citizen survey and the need to collect information on seniors in the community, and I think this is a great opportunity to sort of reemphasize the importance of the census that's going to be happening this coming year. I know there's been a lot of great work done already by our city staff. I don't know yet if they've had the opportunity to come and speak with the committee, or to put materials at, or do events at, the Benjamin Gaither Center with respect to the census specifically, but if they haven't, I would strongly encourage you all to look into doing something along those lines, because it's so critical that we count everybody in our community, because only by getting that data can we really plan appropriately for the future needs of our community. And for anybody who's wondering, the census is completely safe and anonymous, but we need that information. And of course, it means that the city will get important federal funds for programs that we use for a variety of things, including certain senior services that are supported by federal funds, as well as representation, adequate representation in Congress and in Annapolis, so we really do need to make sure that the census is plugged in with the Benjamin Gaither Center programs and activities. I hope you all will take a look at that this year. I also want to salute the work that the committee and staff does in supporting the Active Aging Expo. We were just talking about it before our session started, and it's just always such a wonderful, vibrant, well-attended event, and that's due in no small part to the work you all do to support it, so thank you. And I thought it was interesting when you put up the slide that showed the concentrations of members around the city who are members of the Benjamin Gaither Center. To me, it really showed that the membership is spread throughout the entire city, and there isn't any one spot, or one half, or one neighborhood within the city where membership is concentrated. That's another great testament to the fact that we're doing a pretty good job reaching out to the entire city and making sure that folks are engaged and able to take advantage of the programs and the center. Of course, we can always do more, we need to do more. We're going to continue the long-term conversation about facilities and what we can do to support the center, but I just really want to thank you for all the good work that you do.
Thank you.
Mike?
Yeah, you know, I don't want to repeat anything, and I'll try not to, but I do recall that we had actually developed plans and had property for a new center, and things changed. So, I think the biggest impact was when the county pulled out, is we had an enormous loss of members because of that. I think that reflects the fact that a number of individuals in the demographic that, you know, that we provide services for and recreational activities for have limited incomes, just because of their age and status like that. So, what's refreshing is the efforts that we have gone into, the improvements here, and the designation of the Benjamin Gaither Center as the place for our mature residents here. Has had a positive impact, so to see the enrollment or the membership increase to nearly 700 people is pretty significant. I think we were about 900 when the county decided that they were going to pull out of this, so I think that's very important, and if we continue to grow there, that'll give us, we'll have to take a much closer look and see what we can provide for that part of our community, which, you know, I'm actually a member of as well, so there are a couple of us up here, I think, that would fit into that. So, and I wanted to, so I think that's very important to see how we restore the membership and provided greater services and activities for people who are active aging, that's the appropriate term for that, but also how the presence and the participation in those activities helps create the quality of life that we have here for everybody, so I think that's an important impact. And finally, I wanted to say I really do enjoy watching the Hey Jerry videos on Facebook. They're really good, they're timely and entertaining as well, but there's lots of information in there, too, so...
Thank you.
And finally, I'm glad that Ryan mentioned the census is really important, that we have an accurate count, but I think it's also important that, for those individuals who've been around and participated in more censuses in the United States over a period of time, can testify to how important it is to have that information collected and how we contribute to that. So, there are a number of different ways that cities are trying to make sure that we get a complete count, and part of that is activating the population that we've been talking about, that your committee's been working with and represents in all cities, is to make sure that we get a good count of all demographics, all populations within the city, but in particular, the senior community. So, thank you.
Neil?
All right, well, again, thanks for the presentation. I will remain in denial that I'm eligible for membership, as I was last year. Really, one question on top of what everybody else has said. You know, you're rebuilding the membership of the organization of the center, it's going well. At some point, do you run out of space? Is that an issue, or is it other reasons that you're looking for more, another facility?
We run out of programming space. The problem we're having is baby boomers have changed what it means to be a senior. They're more active, they're looking for different things than traditional senior centers. At the same time, we have 30-plus members in their 90s, so we're trying to serve this very diverse age group, and to do that, we need more programming space. Right now, where we do our fitness classes... Right now, one of our, our, where we do our fitness classes, if we run a fitness class, we've also now lost two programming spaces. So then we end up, if we run a fitness class, we can only run one other program, and that's in our lecture room. So we can't run multiple programs to serve that diverse population. Because we still have some people who spend many hours, want to play bingo and crochet. We have other people who want to do very active things, you know? We can't reach and, uh, take care of the needs of our younger seniors.
Yeah, let me give you just a couple of concrete examples. So at 8:30 Monday through Friday, we used to have a walking tape that would play. And people came in, the same people, I mean, you know, they were into it and came every morning at 8:30 to get their exercise in. But we had to cut that back to Monday, Wednesday, Friday because we needed space for the bone builders class and a fit-for-all class. And then we have activities like ping pong, which, you know, it's a, uh, an activity a lot of younger seniors like to pursue. We can only offer that one day a week, whereas like other senior centers in the area may have that every day. So some people are going to other locations because we can't meet all of their needs.
All right, thank you.
All right, well, this is the time where we'd like to hear from anybody in the public who'd like to speak on this topic. Do we have anybody? And if so, I'll, I'll tell you what the rules are. Come on up, John. Oh, it's not John, it's behind you, I saw it, I saw it. Yeah, please, uh,
You need the microphone.
Please come to the microphone here, state your name and address or your neighborhood for the record.
Okay, okay, my name is Anna Carroll, and I've been a member of the Senior Center for at least 12 years. And I've seen it grow. And this, the impact of the exercise class is overcrowded. We have a room for exercising that I do, it's a sitting and standing, and there's no room. I mean, there's about 45 people in that room and that's overcrowded. It's not, I don't like going there. So I found another place to go, which is Asbury Village. When they have their exercise class, I go Monday and Wednesday at 4:30 to 5:30. Huge room. No problem adding another 50 people in that room. We are limited in space. There's people that enjoy the exercising, but it's not comfortable. Not at all. So that's what I've got to say.
Thank you. Anyone else? All right, well, we thank you very much, we will take all this into consideration and see how things progress.
Thank you very much.
Thank you. Okay, next, we're going to have our briefing for the Multicultural Affairs Committee. And we have Andy Rosati from our staff, uh, and we have Jose Contreras, who is the committee chair.
All right, um, good evening, Mr. Mayor and City Council. So I am going to talk about the Multicultural Affairs Committee tonight. I'm going to start off by reading our mission statement because I think it's very important that we understand why the Multicultural Affairs Committee exists. Um, it's to continue to enrich our city through the promotion of understanding, respect, and appreciation of the many cultures of Gaithersburg. Gaithersburg has changed a lot since I was first here as a five-year-old. And it's, it truly has become, um, one of the most diverse cities in the country. I've literally seen it happen. It's one of the reasons I actually came back as I left as a prodigal son, uh, to go find my fortunes closer to DC. But the diversity is one of the things that, um, really called to me as I moved back to raise my family. And, um, that's actually one of the reasons why I also became a member of the Multicultural Affairs Committee. So I wanted to, um, recognize the members of our committee. I am the chairperson, uh, whether the decision or not, um, still be, to be debated, but, uh, I, I serve as your chairperson. We also, uh, had two additional members that have joined, um, in the past year, uh, Crispin Cole and Debang Lau. So we're really excited that they've joined the committee and we're looking forward to each of them bringing new ideas, um, and, and, um, looking at what we do and really enriching our, our, uh, let's say, our, the way we, we, uh, do business and bringing some, some new, some new blood to, to the committee. Some of the returning members are Samir Hussain, who, um, I want to give a shout out because she's been a longstanding member, um, as is, as is Ken Weiss and, uh, Washington Sanghu, uh, who also serves as the vice chairman.
Welcome, everyone.
One of the other things I want to call out is that this is, this is a, a committee where we invite the community to come out to our meetings. They're held the second Wednesday of the month, uh, in the month of January, March, May, September, and October. They're held at 7:30 PM at the Activity Center at Bora Park. So in terms of what, what does the Multicultural Affairs Committee do? In terms of 2019, um, as you can see, there's, there's a list of the events that, uh, we played a part in. We participate and support cultural recognitions, proclamations. One of our signature events is the Diversity Showcase, um, was held on May 11th of 2019 at Lake Forest Mall. Another one of our, uh, major events is the Social Powel, that was just held actually on November 2nd at the Activity Center. One of our newer events is the Dia de los Muertos Ultra Exhibit, that's also held at the, uh, Activity Center. We also support cultural arts exhibitions and receptions. And, uh, we also serve as judges at the Labor Day Parade. And, uh, one of, one of the, uh, other events that we support is, uh, La Mía de Mayo Run Festival, um, which is always a fun one to participate. We talk about, um, young and old, my kids run the, the kids' race and, um, I run in the, the Mía de Mayo. Sometimes I race Mike, it's hard keeping up with him sometimes.
That's whatever he says.
In terms of the cultural recognitions, uh, what you see, um, here are the cultural months that the committee celebrates. We celebrate them through proclamations, presentations at the mayor and city council meetings. The committee members work to identify local recipients who attend the meetings and accept a proclamation on behalf of the culture which they represent. So you can see February, African-American History Month, April, Arab-American Heritage Month, May, Asian-Pacific American Heritage Month, September is Hispanic Heritage Month, and November is American Indian and Alaska Native Heritage Month. Um, and then on to one of our signature events. It's our largest event, it's a diversity showcase which celebrates many of the cultures in Gaithersburg. This event's an opportunity to educate attendees about some of the cultures in Gaithersburg as well as one of the most, uh, as, as we're one of the most diverse cities in the United States. The, the last of our diversity showcases was held, um, on May 11th of 2019. We had eight cultural performers, 550 attendees. It's been held for the last three years at Lake Forest Mall. And it's, it's, the event is mainly to showcase many cultural diverse dancers and musicians. We have dance musical performances that are presented, uh, by groups from Africa, Latin America, Middle East, Asia, and Europe. Um, and then for the first time this year, we had an African storyteller that, uh, had a really, uh, entertaining story, was very engaging. And our, actually, and I think I covered this, our attendance was 550 attendees. So that event keeps growing every year. And I would say 550, um, despite the weather, we, we actually, it was, it was a beautiful day out so we were wondering if people would actually come to the mall and, instead of going outdoors and doing other things. And we actually still had a pretty big crowd, so we're really happy to, to see the community engage. And, well, I kind of see there, the crowd really was, um, really engaged in kind of going around and, and watching, uh, the performances. So, um, with each of the performances, we requested that each dance group provide a culturally educational, um, culturally and educational information about their performance, um, and kind of speak to the traditional dances that they were about to perform. Uh, some of the groups taught lessons, others spoke about the history of the dances. It was actually great to see that some of, some of them literally were trying to, uh, engage the audience, get people to come out and try to learn some of the dances. I have two left feet, so I didn't really, tried to, tried to run away, but it was still fun to, to, to give it a, a good try. In addition to, to the, uh, the performances that we had on the stage, uh, there was also other activities in and around the, the center stage area, calligraphy and henna. We also had a free book giveaway. And as we did in, in prior years, we also did a, um, trivia where, uh, people would, would be able to come up to the table and, um, answer questions about the countries. And as we had transition time between performances, um, we also then engaged the entire audience in trying to, um, have people answer questions. And so it was great to see people, um, guess, make guesses and actually also learn a little bit about the different cultures. Again, one of our longtime committee members, Samir Hussain, uh, brought informations and artifacts about Palestine to display and that's become also a staple at Diversity Showcase, um, and really well-received. Uh, the other, uh, one of the other major events that we have is the, uh, Social Powel. And, uh, it's held, it was held on November 2nd in the Activity Center at Bora Park, um, to celebrate American Indian and Alaskan Native Heritage Month. This is a partnership with the Indian Health Service Employees Association. And we've done this event four times now. And every year, it's grown, um, and become ever more popular. This year, we actually doubled the space, so prior year, we used one of the gyms and this year, we actually opened up both gyms and still filled the gym. We had twice as many vendors that, that came, which meant that there was just more beautiful things to look at, um, and purchase. And the, uh, the food was still there, that was, um, really delicious. I was, uh, very much a patron of the food. But at Arch and Craft, we actually also added a, uh, third, um, Arch and Craft Station. That's one of the, um, activities that the Multicultural Affairs Committee, um, contributes to that event. We have members of the committee that help, um, organize craft activities for attendees. And I was, I was about to say for the children, but there was also adults doing their best to try to put the, uh, the, the, uh, dream catchers together and, and some of the other activities. The way the, the event, um, is structured, at the beginning of the event, there's a grand entry that takes place and, uh, it welcomes both the dancers and the visitors and, uh, pays tributes to the ancestors, including, um, American Indian veterans. So one of the things that is emphasized is that the, uh, the American Indian population is one of the biggest, uh, participants in our military. And so they're very proud of their dedication to the country and, and so will we. Uh, in terms of attendance, um, this year, attendance grew from 600 last year to, um, 700 attendees. Like I said, we doubled the space, but we still filled the house, so that was great to see. And Mayor, Mayor Ashman and the council members attended the event and, uh, presented the proclamation to the members of the Indian Health Service Employee Association, who are our partners of the event. The event also included kids' games and crafts, drumming, dancing, food, and craft vendors. So that's one of the other, um, activities that the, uh, that the committee members, um, help organize. While the dancers, um, have spent the majority of the day putting on performances, we, we allow them a time to go ahead and get a little bit of food and kind of recharge, while the committee, um, helps organize some of the games for, for the children to participate in. And then on to, again, one of our newest events is the Dia de los Muertos. It's a partnership with Decolors Mexican Folk Dance Company. Um, the, the committee supported the Day of the Dead Ultra Exhibit at the Activity Center from October 25th through November 2nd. And this exhibit included an information sheet available for the public to learn the details about this important Mexican holiday. And again, second year, one of the things I really want to highlight around this event is this was not an event that was created or not, or an exhibit that was created by the committee. This is a great example of a great partnership, um, with city residents. They came to the committee, they came to one of our committee meetings and said, hey, we have this idea, we do this. Um, and I believe it was originally held in the basement of an apartment complex. And it was just, the residents would get together and, um, throw this event. And they thought, well, wouldn't this be great to share this, share a little bit of their culture with the city at large? And, um, when they made a presentation to our committee, we thought this was great. They, they pretty much did all the work, they were just looking for space. And, um, a great credit to, uh, to Andy, um, and the rest of the city staff that really looked to, to figure out the logistics for them and put that together in a pretty short time. And this year, obviously, we had a little more time to plan, um, and were able to execute flawlessly again.
It was an amazing display. Really, really awesome.
Thank you. And in terms of, uh, participation in city events, so, um, our committee is not a large committee, so one of the things that we, um, try to do is just support a lot of the great work that the city already does, um, to celebrate the, uh, the cultures in, in our city. When we have the proclamations, one of the other things that is done through that typically is a, um, a month of, of art, um, for that particular culture. So we've, we do an art exhibit for African-American History Month, for Asian-Pacific American History Month, Hispanic-American Heritage Month. We participate in the Labor Day Parade, we support La Mía de Mayo through a, um, table where we do a craft. And we also do book, um, partnership with, uh, uh, what is the name of the? Discover Books, that's right. Where, uh, people can come up and, and take a book and we do the same thing as we do with Diversity Showcase, a trivia, um, about, um, Hispanic Heritage Month, I guess, in that, in that, or, or, uh, yeah, Hispanic Heritage Month, but, uh, Hispanic culture, I guess, for Mía de Mayo. And, uh, they answer questions and they get a book to take home with them. So, again, kind of, uh, not just focusing on cultural expression, but also on, um, giving our, our residents and the participants an opportunity to find a book, read, and educate themselves. In terms of advisory role in other committees, so this is actually something that has come up in the last few years, um, that I've really enjoyed. Because this really also shows the commitment of the city, but also the commitment of other organizations, um, in and around the city to really, um, leverage the, the diversity that we have in, in our area. We've had lots of committees and, um, groups come to the Multicultural Affairs Committee for advice, for asking on how to engage the different communities, what are the ways to access, reach, um, potential, uh, participants or potential members of other committees. And so it's been great to, one, learn about some of these organizations and what their strategies are, what their outreach is and why it's important for them. But then also to kind of share a little bit of what, what we've done to, to reach out to, uh, various communities. And then looking forward, so kind of recapped our year, looking forward, um, we've got four, four things that we wanted to bring to the table. Uh, we wanted to provide opportunities to educate the community about the city's rich cultural diversity. We want to continue to advise other groups and individuals on diversity issues and concerns. We want to build active partnerships that promote and enhance our multicultural community and create opportunities to engage members of our culturally diverse community. And with that, I will stop here and see if there's any questions.
Thank you, Jose. Andy, good job running the slides.
Key, it's very important.
We appreciate, we appreciate very much, um, the, the work that your committee does and the opportunities to celebrate the different aspects and cultures in our city. I think every one of us, I know every one of us is, is proud every day about how diverse Gaithersburg is and how we, how we rank nationally. And I think we all feel the, not only the pride of that, but the responsibility of it. And, and your committee really helps, um, channel that and find, find ways for us to, to recognize these different cultures. So I just want to express my appreciation. Who wants to go next? Lorian's looking at me. Go ahead.
Okay, I always look at you when you make comments, Mayor, so I'll, I'll, I'll go. So, so thank you both. Thank you to all the, uh, members of the committee. I know it's a labor of love, it's a, you know, most of our committees are, you know, very small and, but many hands lighten the load. So thank you all for your contribution. I always look forward to the, um, Diversity Fair. I remember when we used to do the individual activities every month in addition to the proclamations. And I miss that engagement because of, um, the- proclamations, and I miss that engagement because of the intention that used to happen during those nights. More reflection, more historical highlights of the diversity. And I've, you know, I've seen the Diversity Fair, and I like the premise of it. I would love to see more attention to the historical significance and more cultural and not just performance-wise, but other ways we can highlight the diversity. And so I think it's great what you all have done. I continue to see the crowds growing, and I would love to think about more ways to engage with the diverse communities. So I always talk about how are we outreach-ing and engaging with the diverse population so we're not insular in our planning. And so I'm not sure how we can do that, but I know that, you know, as the most diverse city, we have tons of groups who represent all of these different, you know, cultural groups, these ethnic groups. And so I would love to hear more about how we can support that engagement with these diverse groups and bring more of a holistic representation of the cultures that are represented here in the city. But, you know, I really appreciate your commitment. You've been on this committee for quite some time, and we really appreciate you coming back year after year. And I see so many familiar faces and in more than one way that you engage in the city. And so we're just really appreciative that you've taken this on, and Andy's an excellent liaison and very responsive to us. We just had our Jingle Jubilee, and we were able to have a more inclusive representation of all of our cultures and our religious practices. And so, you know, I appreciate that you hear us and you see us, and just thank you for the work you did. Great presentation.
Thank you.
Mike?
You know, I echo that. I think, thank you all for your service. It's been, I know a number of the committee members have been there as long as I've been on the city council, so there's a couple of you. And you do great work. I think, you know, when we look at our own, we look at the city and we look at our own council, we have the most diverse city council in Montgomery County, probably in the state of Maryland. So, you know, that's an important message. And certainly, like our other committees, we'd like to see them grow and also grow not only in numbers, but also in influence. And I think there are different ways that your committee can also contribute to the work of other committees. And so, but, and it would be easier if you had more members. All we can do is invite people and ask them to participate. And I think, but I think the activities that you've created and built on over the last few years has been pretty important in that. And I think highlighting the diversity of the city as being the most diverse small city in the United States, that's pretty important, and it's a title we shouldn't take for granted, but we should use to our advantage as well. So I think, I really love what the event that the Diversity Showcase has become. And I think that people really do look forward to it. So it's been a great way to demonstrate and to provide an opportunity for our different communities to come together all in one place and share their history, share their culture and their pride in that, too. I was really, we've been really excited, my family and I have been really excited by the Dia de los Muertos Altar the last couple of years. So I think that that's been a kind of the perfect thing to have for Hispanic Heritage Month, along with the art exhibit there as well. And I think, you know, there are probably some other cultural events that we can implement with the other celebrations. The Social Powwow, you know, that's grown every year as well, so we use the whole gymnasium at the Activity Center this year. So that was, you know, so I think that shows that there, we have people in our community that want the opportunity to be able to celebrate, to share their culture and to show their pride in their culture and their own heritage. So it's important work that you do, and it's a highlight for Gaithersburg to do it. So I think we just have to think about, you know, I think the objectives you've come up with are reasonable, and, but I think some of the other aspects is that we can try and look at how this committee will interact with some of the other committees, just to make them more diverse and to bring that, too. So that said, I just want to say thank you, and thank you, Andy, for being such a great member of the staff to work with this committee, too.
Thank you. Appreciate that.
Neil?
All right, well, I'll keep it brief again. Thank you for all the great events and the things that you do. I attended both of the big events that you do, the Showcase and the Social Powwow. I hope with the obvious fate of the Lake Forest Mall that you find another home that is suitable for the event and that it can continue to be as publicly available. I know a lot of people that go, have been to the Diversity Showcase, went to the mall intending to shop and discovered it and learned and were able to participate that way, which is a great thing. You know, the Activity Center is great, but it's nice to be out where the people are as well. And, you know, I've had the opportunity to travel and see the world and see a lot of how people live throughout the world, but, you know, this is a way to get to know people and their culture and where they're from and what they bring to the city without having to get on an airplane, which is a great thing, too. So thank you. It's important what you're doing, and I know it's a lot for a small group, so we appreciate your work. And Andy, and appreciate what you bring as well.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Ryan?
Thank you, Mr. Ray. This is a wonderful committee, really tremendous ambassadors to the city and for the city, and allowing us to celebrate our diversity, as you said, Jose. And, you know, we're all so proud of that, as the mayor said. I mean, this is a point of pride, not only because it's a wonderful thing in and of its own self, but also because it's a great way to market our city and talk about our strengths, and it touches everything that we do. And so thank you, the committee members and staff, for being great ambassadors on this issue. And, you know, Loriann talked a little bit about some of the events we used to do, and it's interesting and great to see how that we have, how we have changed and evolved with limited resources as a committee and as a city. And so many things that we do that we didn't do when I first joined the council back in 2007. Diversity Showcase wasn't a thing. La Mira de Mayo wasn't a thing. And so we're always, it's clear that we're always, staff and committee members and others are always looking for new ways to take advantage of the resources and the partnerships that we have, as you mentioned, the great example, you know, of the Day of the Dead display that you could partner with just a group of interested and committed folks who live in the community who wanted to do something with respect to diversity and culture. And we'll continue to have those partnership opportunities with, you know, formal nonprofit organizations and just informal community groups, and we're always looking for those. And I think it's really important that this issue of celebrating diversity and multiculturalism and inclusion not just be sort of siloed aside to one little committee or, you know, one set of discreet events throughout the year. And so when you talked about working together with other committees and other groups and sort of cross-pollinating and talking with other city committees about how the Multicultural Affairs Committee can be an advisor to them, you know, that sort of really got my attention as a way to underscore the fact that the issues of multiculturalism, diversity, the things that we celebrate really touch everything in the city and shouldn't just be treated as sort of a set aside issue. They really are core to the fabric of everything that we do. And in that vein, I'll reiterate what I said to the last committee during their presentation, which is that I hope that Multicultural Advisory Committee will also think of ways to work the census in to some of its programming over the course of the next year, because this is a committee that gets a special opportunity sometimes to talk to underrepresented demographics and groups within our city who need to be counted and who need to, you know, receive the information about why the census is important, sometimes in multiple languages. And I hope we'll continue to do that, not only through the Multicultural Affairs Committee, but through all our committees and all of our efforts from the city throughout the year. Neil beat me to the punch a little bit on the issue of Lake Forest Mall and the Diversity Showcase. We don't want to get ahead of ourselves here, and the mall may very well be still operating the next time we do, we plan to do a Diversity Showcase, but it may not. And we just sort of don't know at this point because things are in flux. And I'm sure staff has already started thinking about this, and anything that we, as the mayor and council can do to kind of support the effort to think about where we might be able to move the Diversity Showcase in the future, we're looking forward to having those conversations with you. We know you're already starting to plan far in advance for that. So thank you all so much for what you do.
Thank you.
Is there anybody here in the audience who'd like to speak on this topic? Come on up.
Hello, I'm Melissa McDonald. I'm not a resident of Gaithersburg, but I do teach at a Gaithersburg Elementary School. And my thought was, I know all, pretty much all of the elementary schools and some of the middle and high schools will have International Days or International Nights. Usually they're sponsored by the PTSA or the PTA, depending on if it's a secondary or elementary school. So that's another resource you could reach out to, because I know with all of our schools being so very diverse, mine is, our International Day is very, very popular, and we have many, many countries represented in my, our little school alone. So I just wanted to suggest that that could be another way to reach out, to get more community involvement, is through the elementary and especially the elementary schools, PTAs, but of course also middle and high school. They're just typically, they're typically too busy, the middle and high schoolers, but elementary schoolers love and their parents love to share their cultures and countries.
Yeah, no, actually, thank you for that. One of our greatest resources in terms of finding performers for Diversity Showcase actually are our high school students that come in and perform. Usually it's a lot of the Latin dances, because we have that huge event at Trasmore where the high schoolers have a dance competition, Latin dance competition. But absolutely, we also have, like you said, it's really a lot of the students that make up a lot of our performers, and it's a great partnership between the schools and the city to put on that event. One partnership, actually, I kind of forgot to even talk about is for La Mira de Mayo is Montgomery County Road Runners Club. They actually organize that race, like the logistics of putting a race together is quite hefty, but they're pretty good at doing that. And so it takes a little bit of stress off of the city in terms of trying to do those types of things. So partnerships is really our key to success for all the work that all the committees do, because as you guys have said, our committees are limited, our funds are limited. So partnerships have absolutely been a keystone of our success.
I also wanted to echo, you mentioned the Montgomery County Road Runners. I don't know if you've engaged with the Montgomery County Office of Community Partnerships? They have their own constituency groups that meet regularly throughout the year, and they would be excellent resources for these events to partner to and help with getting the word out.
I know people on that committee.
All right. Thank you all very much. We're going to move on to our next committee briefing, which is the Gaithersburg Book Festival. And Melissa McDonald is going to be leading the presentation, and Carolyn Crosby, I guess is going to be running the slides. For those of you who don't know Melissa, she, in addition to her day job as being the media specialist at Flower Hill Elementary School, it does the, she programs the children's workshops at the book festival. And we have Garina Sassi sitting here in the audience who does the adult workshops at the Gaithersburg Book Festival, so.
You took some of what I was going to say.
Oh, sorry.
Thank you. Thank you.
There goes three slides.
We're done, actually. So good evening. Again, my name is Melissa McDonald, and I am a member of the Gaithersburg Book Festival Committee and a school library media specialist at Flower Hill Elementary School in Gaithersburg, which is outside of the city, but we still are very proud Gaithersburg residents. I am delighted to be here tonight to update you on the accomplishments and the activities of the Gaithersburg Book Festival Committee. It is the mission of the Gaithersburg Book Festival, affectionately known as GBF, to foster an interest in reading, writing and literary conversation for the residents of Gaithersburg and the residents of its surrounding communities by bringing together world-class authors from all over the state. From all over to share their stories and the craft of writing in an intimate, accessible and dynamic festival setting. Each year, approximately 20 members and friends of our committee work together to bring the mission to fruition by organizing multiple aspects of the festival. For 10 years, the festival has been bringing hundreds of top-notch authors to Gaithersburg for attendees to enjoy, learn from and interact with all in one wonderful day. Our 10th annual festival this past May was no different. 115 authors joined us to discuss and sign their books. Conversations, interviews and presentations engaged audiences of all interests and ages, and C-SPAN Book TV returned for its ninth consecutive year to broadcast many of them throughout the day. Committee members worked year-round on author recruitment, coordinating writer workshops and poetry contests, and on marketing and public relations. To mark this milestone anniversary, new festival branding was introduced. Cake was passed out to attendees, and a celebratory concert ended the day. It was a triumphant festival, and I am prouder than ever to be a member of this committee. The Gaithersburg Book Festival Committee works not only to put on the event, we strive also to engage as many members of the community as possible in as many ways as possible. Here are some of those ways. More than 275 volunteers signed up to help make the festival run smoothly. Many of them expressed how proud and grateful they are that Gaithersburg offers such a high-quality literary event and that they got to be a part of it. In fact, since the very first festival in 2010, over 25,000 hours have been donated by members of this community to ensure the mission of the GBS, GBF, is fulfilled and continued. The festival's annual writing or its poetry contest for high school students continues to engage hundreds of students from Maryland, Virginia and the District of Columbia. And in 2019 alone, 64 sponsors donated a total of $27,400 in cash and over $61,000 worth of in-kind support to the festival. Lastly, to keep GBF engaged with the community between festivals, the committee continues to implement standalone literary events such as author presentations, book signings and writer workshops throughout the year. More on this in a bit. I'd like to offer a snapshot of the festival's attendees, the way in which they interact with the festival and what they think of it. In 2019, the festival saw approximately 23,000 attendees, a record turnout. Of those surveyed, 76% fell in the 35 to 59 age bracket. 78% were from Montgomery County, 87% were from Maryland, and 13% were from out of state. 68% heard about the festival via the website and social media. 37% were attending for the first time, and 97% indicated that they are likely to attend again in 2020. GBF's social media accounts and monthly e-newsletter currently engage regularly with over 10,000 opt-in followers. And as you can see here in the sampling of the comments, attendees and participants had to say, "Great job. Thank you for bringing such a wonderful event to our community. There is just so much to love. The excellent organization and the wide variety of authors are the biggest assets of the festival. GBF is a fantastic event. I'm honored to have been selected as presenter and exhibitor. And I was so happy to see such fabulous authors and so many attendees. The equality of the authors is superb." The 2020 festival will be held on May 16th. Author recruitment is well underway, and you can be certain of another stellar lineup. In conjunction with the 2020 festival, there are two major developments the committee would like to share with you. The first is the new Gaithersburg Reads Event. Author and Gaithersburg native Janine Cummins has a highly anticipated new novel coming out in January. American Dirt tells us the immigrant story in a very compelling and suspenseful way. Residents of Gaithersburg will be invited to read this book and attend a discussion with the author on March 31st at Gaithersburg High School. And the second development is the relocation of the festival to Bora- And the second development is the relocation of the festival to Bora Park, an activity center for at least the years 2020 and 2021. The move is necessary due to planned construction in Old Town Gaithersburg that will impact portions of the existing festival grounds. However, we are confident that attendees can expect the same great event that they have experienced for the past decade. Bora Park is in close proximity to Old Town and offers many amenities that will benefit the festival during the temporary relocation period. Thank you for your attention and may I answer any questions?
Thank you, Melissa. Thank you, Garina, for being here, Carolyn, for helping in innumerable ways. We are really, first off, let me, let me thank all the committee who's not here as well. We have a wonderful, wonderful committee, many of whom have been volunteering their time to make Gaithersburg Book Festival's success since, well, since we started planning in 2009. It's, it's literally amazing. And it's a great, it's a great partnership between volunteers and professional staff in that the staff handles the logistics and the volunteers handle the programming. And, and over this decade-plus, it's really melded in a, in a very productive, efficient way. It's kind of a well-oiled machine and it's, it's awesome. I wanted to stress how great this event coming up is going to be, this, this book, "American Dirt" by Janine Cummins, not only, it's not just some random book and some random author that we're doing an event with. Janine Cummins grew up in Gaithersburg. She's a graduate of Gaithersburg High School. She left after college to New York to go become a famous, world-famous author. And this book is about to make her a world-famous author. Seriously, this book's got such amazing buzz, it's, it's amazing. So, amazing buzz makes it amazing. I'm just using amazing to imply she's a world-famous author. Right, right.
That would be amazing.
It would be amazing. I have to add some new adjectives to my repertoire.
Just the majors to this discussion.
But I think not only does the story, will the story resonate with our, with our city because she's a daughter of the city of Gaithersburg and grew up here and has it in her blood, but also because of the story itself, you know, where it's, it's an immigrant story, but told, as Melissa said, a very compelling way, it's a page-turner. And here we are in a city where roughly a third of our residents were born in a country other than the United States. I just feel like people are going to connect with it in so many ways. So, we're really looking, we've never done something like this before, like a citywide book club, a citywide read, and I'm really looking forward to it. You're going to hear a lot about it in the coming months. Questions, comments?
I'll go. You know, I think it's, it's been great over the 10 years to see the event grow, to see how it engages the city, to see how it engages our, our young people in schools, since we have a presence in the schools that's associated with the, with the book festival, the mayor's reading.
Mayor's book club.
Book club, I think is, you know, kids love to read and I think they have the opportunity to read. The number of books that some of them read and I think, you know, going to the number of pages is probably a good idea. But I think the ancillary events have been really cool, too. And so, we just had one last week. Jan Brett, the children's famous, world internationally renowned children's author and illustrator, gave a fantastic presentation. I hope we have the picture of that tiger somewhere saved.
Definitely in my office.
Ah, okay, well, all right. We got a show to the public. Can we invite them back to your office?
Sure.
But what I wanted to point out is that when I, we were standing in line waiting for Jan to sign our books and talking to the people on either side of us in the line, one woman was from Charleston, West Virginia. She came for that event that night. Another woman was from Hagerstown. She grew up in Gaithersburg, she lives there now, she heard about it. Another one, and then there were people from Frederick and people from DC and even people from other parts of Montgomery County not in Gaithersburg. So, I think that's, that says a lot about our draw, but it also says something about our partnership with Politics and Pros and I think it's really important to remember that because a couple of these people didn't know about it because they were following the GBF on social media or in the newsletter or anything else. They found out about it through our partner, Politics and Pros. And that's pretty important. And I think that's been a big part of also putting us on the map in terms of being this great literary event in the state. And, you know, and, you know, considering where we are in the metro DC area, that's a really big deal. So, congratulations to the committee. It's, it's grown, it seems to grow and we, we, people come in and contribute and others are, want to participate and contribute. So, but, you know, it takes 25,000 volunteer hours, you can't, can't beat that with a stick, so.
You can be a great writer as well.
Yeah. I'm amazed at some of the things that I say sometimes. Okay, anyway, thank you very much and we're looking forward to the next book festival. This may actually be one that I have to miss because of the family wedding, but I don't know, we're working on those dates right now, so, but I, it's been a pleasure to have been at the first 10.
Well, we'll forgive you if you have to miss it.
Yeah, only once, though. All right, who'd like to go, if anybody? Loriann, I see.
All right. Well, I love this event. I think it, it really gives our residents and people from all over a chance to come to the city and not have to go all the way to DC for their book festival, but I think it offers a really unique event. And just being in line when I talk to people, they're coming from all over, not just from the DMV, but from, you know, out-of-state Delaware, they're coming from North Carolina, people are spending the weekends here. So, it would be nice to, I don't know if there's a way to track where people are staying, if they're staying overnight, are they eating here, and what other benefits besides that one day? Because I think this is, you know, such a well-known event now going into its 11th year that, you know, there's so many more benefits to the book festival that we may not be tracking, that I would love to see the numbers on. And I, I just enjoy the, the selection of the books. I think we've become even more diverse and inclusive in who we're bringing. And there's always something, something new, something I'm learning. I love how the schools are engaged. The Gaithersburg High School Education Foundation, they always have a short story contest and I love reading the short stories that the students come up with. So, this is just a great way to engage every age and group and individual in our community and outside to show them just a different part of the city. And I can't wait to see what's in store for this coming year. So, thank you all. Another huge thanks to all the work you all do. This is all volunteer and so we really appreciate the commitment, the time, the effort, and it shows every year in all the unique ways that you highlight the books and the authors. So, thank you.
You're welcome.
Thank you, Loriann. I'll just note to your point about tracking who's staying here or eating at a restaurant or shop, we do try to capture that in our survey and I'll have to send you the results.
Oh, okay.
I think it's like 30 or 40% of the people, the question on the survey is addressed to people specifically who don't live in Gaithersburg.
Yes.
And I think 30 or 40% is usually around the range we get for, I'm, I am actually going to eat at a place in Gaithersburg or shop at a Gaithersburg place while I'm here. Neil?
So, again, I'll keep it relatively brief. It's a wonderful event, as we all know. Personally, you tend to not book the authors that I tend to read day-to-day, which is good because I come and find new authors. And last year I introduced at two events and three different authors, read all their books. You took me way out of my comfort zone and it was all good stuff. Read the NICS the year before, had to, got to introduce the author. That one was truly a wonderful book. Really a great story. So, I think it's, you know, it's great. We see so many little kids there in the kids' programming section, which I think you have a little something to do with, Melissa, is a, is really a special thing and it's so important to get our kids reading. It's just the fundamental foundation for learning as they go through life, so.
Absolutely.
So, it's a great event, keep up the good work. I don't know what else to say, just, we just hope for good weather every year.
Oh, yes. Make it happen.
There's really not much more to add that we haven't already heap praise upon this event and this committee and the staff over the last 10 years, but I am just constantly amazed, amazed by the volume of content squeezed into a single day and the well-oiled machine of the logistics. I mean, the mayor talked earlier about how it's this great partnership between the volunteers from the committee and from the rest of the volunteer team who work on the content and the outreach to the authors and the staff who work on the logistics. But independently, both of those things are just eye-hoppingly amazing every time we do this event. So, kudos to all of you, keep it up. That's really part of what makes it a great event. I mean, you know, there's a lot of great book festivals out there, but I think the reason we keep getting these incredible reviews is because it's just so well-coordinated in terms of the volume and the quality of content and the logistics, even when the weather doesn't fully cooperate with us, although this year it certainly will. And, you know, the challenge with great events like these, and certainly people will keep coming back to it, even if you keep it exactly the same, but the challenge to keep it fresh is to come up with something a little new and different to add to it each year. And the idea of satellite events, which we've been doing for the last few years, I think is really great. It helps keep the book festival on people's minds throughout the year instead of just having to do a big marketing push as we lead up to the festival every year. And I really love the idea of a citywide read. The idea of selecting, you know, a single book for adults, maybe also a single book for kids, and really pushing that as a way for everybody to have common experience in reading the same book and being able to do events where we're talking about it and we're giving people an opportunity to get together and talk to each other about it and what they think about it. I think that's just such an awesome idea and a way to further the connectivity that we already have in our community and sort of really highlight the way that we bring people together. So, I do hope that will really continue to be a big piece of this in the coming years. It's going to be a challenge trying to pick the one book that should be the endorsed citywide read book every year, but I think that this committee and the mayor and everybody involved is up to that challenge. So, I just want to, again, salute all of you for what has really become a signature regional, maybe even national cultural event. And we're just very proud of it and we're proud of all of you, so.
And we're going to need all of your help in spreading the word when we, when this read starts going, which will be in January, January 20th, I believe, is when that book comes out. Is there anybody in the public who'd like to speak? Michelle?
With Councilwoman Sales's inquiry about tracking of the statistics and Mayor Ashman's response about the annual survey, I also wanted to share that there is an amazing annual report that's done each year on the book festival. So, make sure that each one of you do receive a copy of that when it is printed.
Yeah, good point. And it's actually, it's actually recently created, it's about to go out to our sponsors. Come on up, Ken.
Thank you. I'm Ken Weiss from Durwood. And just a quick comment, I was glad to see last year a little more emphasis on Spanish-language content in the festival. And I know our mayor is in favor of that and I hope that will continue in, in the 2020 festival.
Thank you. Even though, and just a note again about this citywide read is that while Janine Cummins, you might not realize she is of Hispanic descent, she, there is actually a fair bit of Spanish language in the book and it, it tells us a story that, that's really specific to the Latin American view of immigration, so. But your point's well-taken. We, we, you know, we have, we've had diverse, a, a great diversity of authors at all of our festivals and, you know, some, it, it's not always within our, all, within our control who says yes to our invitations. So, that, the good thing about that is that each year takes on a different character. It's good, it's got a unique character instead of depending on which authors have said yes and which programs we're able to put together. But we appreciate that.
You know, can I, can I?
Yeah.
You know, I think one of the things we, one of the, a group of people we haven't really thanked enough tonight are the authors who participate because so many of them want to come back and so many of them recruit and invite and encourage.
Oh, yeah.
Their colleagues to come, participate in our, in our book festival. So, it's been nice to see some of the same authors come back, you know, on a regular cycle and then bring their colleagues. So, I think that's kind of changed some of the, the character of the sessions that we, of the, the sessions that we have because we have panels of authors instead of one person reading from a book. But, and they deserve a lot of credit, too. In fact, you know, there's a couple of people we can, you can highlight, like Alice McDermott and John Feinstein. Really talked up this book festival, so.
Yeah, Sarah Pekin and.
John Feinstein will be back.
Feinstein will be back this year, so will Sarah, actually. You don't, I don't know if you knew about that yet, but that's happening.
Me?
Yeah.
Yeah, I know. I feel like short bus there in case you asked us. She's on it. We're ready.
Any other, any other testimony or questions, comments? Okay. Thank you all very much.
You're welcome.
I don't know if I'm going to stop smiling tonight. Okay. Next, we have Cultural Arts Advisory Committee. We are welcoming John Morjello from the committee and Shelley Williams from staff, our arts, our events and, cultural events and services division chief.
Good evening. My name is John Morjello. I am a member of the Gaithersburg Cultural Arts Advisory Committee and the president and artistic director of Best Medicine Rep, a nonprofit professional theater company that specializes in new comedies and operates from a storefront at Lake Forest Mall. I'm delighted to be here tonight to update you on the accomplishments and activities of the Cultural Arts Advisory Committee, and I hope that you will find them amazing.
Refunding a lot of things immediately.
The committee is comprised of nine members that are drawn from the community and represent a range of cultural arts interests and experiences. The committee provides guidance on the city's cultural arts facilities and programs, including art in public places. There are currently three vacancies on the committee. These volunteer positions are being promoted in Gaithersburg via press releases, news articles, social media, notice on the city website, and outreach to community, civic, cultural arts, and neighborhoods. Our goal is to assemble a dedicated, inclusive group of volunteers that represents the diversity of Gaithersburg's citizens. It is the mission of the committee to advise the mayor and council and city staff on arts programs and facilities in order to enhance the quality of life in Gaithersburg by developing and supporting cultural, social, and economic opportunities that allow artistic expression and creative excellence to flourish and develop to their fullest potential. In order to achieve this mission, the committee has relied on the cultural arts plan. First adopted in 2006, the cultural arts plan was created by the committee as a roadmap for cultural arts activities. During the past three years, the committee has played a valuable role in updating the 2006 cultural arts plan for inclusion in the park's recreation and culture element of the city's master plan. Committee members served as reviewers and assisted in crafting the 11 cultural objectives that will guide the city arts and cultural endeavors over the next decade. The PRC element of the master plan was adopted August 5th, 2019. A chief component of the cultural plan is the continued development of a robust arts-in-public places program. Leading the current public art undertakings in size and scope is the Old Town Wise Site project. In 2018, the call to artists was released and 50 regional, national, and international artists submitted applications. A panel of committee members and guests, including Mayor Ashman, convened last January to review the applicants and narrow the field to 20. Since then, staff have conducted reference checks and additional rounds of review, finally reducing the field to two finalists. The finalists will be given the opportunity to visit the city in January before presenting a design concept proposal in March 2020. The two finalists, Vicky Scurry and David Dahlquist, are nationally recognized artists specializing in public art. Scurry, based in Seattle, has several projects in greater DC, including this one on Arlington Boulevard. What you are seeing on the bridge spans are laser-cut grills fabricated in steel and backlit by Eli- by LED illumination. The LEDs are programmed to transition from color to color on a fifteen-minute loop and provide motorists with very memorable entry into Arlington. David Dahlquist has his studio in Des Moines, Iowa, but has worked in our region on Washington Metropolitan Area Transit projects. The image here shows a section of his vision and artwork on the South Omaha Streetscape Revitalization Project. For this work, his studio was awarded the American Planning Association's Great Streets in America Award in 2016. We are delighted to have two artists of this caliber vying to partner with the city on the Old Town Y-Site project. In July, the city and downtown Crown held a joint dedication for the new installation by Maryland artist Stephen Weitzman. Innovator's Park is an interactive, meditative, public artwork using landscaping and hardscaping to create an outdoor space dedicated to the spirit of innovation. Names and quotes by visionaries in the sciences, math, literature, humanities, and music are etched into the pavers and echo the street names in Crown. Over the summer, The Rio proposed a relocation of Celebracion, a grouping of twelve artworks created by sculptor Michel van den Hoove. The best-known of the group, Fridolin, is perhaps the most photographed bear in the mid-Atlantic. The committee approved the request to relocate the sculptures to a new active lifestyle and family area under redevelopment across the lake. Staff are working with the Peterson Company on the removal, cleaning, restoration, and relocation of these important artworks. Staff are working to select a local artist for Diamond Farmscape Park project with the plan of final installation in summer 2020. Staff and selected artist Jay Hall Carpenter are working to finalize materials for the Observatory Park Armillary Sun, Sundial submission to the Historic Trust Commission. Plans are to install the artwork in late spring, early summer. The Branding Banner Project is moving forward at last. After negotiations with Pepco failed to be productive, cultural arts and public work staff developed a plan to use city-owned poles designed specifically for banner display. Poles that currently accommodate city banners will comprise Phase One of this project, with two groups of twenty dedicated poles installed over the next two years. The branding banners will celebrate community characteristics such as green spaces, recreation, local architecture, history, heritage, and the arts. Several other projects are on the horizon that we'd like to make you aware of. Artists designed permanent sunshades for the Old Town Plaza, an art installation for the new municipal building at sixteen South Summit Avenue, and art for a proposed pedestrian bridge over Great Seneca and Quince Ridge. Another important initiative of this committee over the last year was helping emerging arts groups and individual artists to develop business skills. The Arts Enterprise Toolkit not only aligns with our mission, but it helps to fuel the local economy by helping artists to thrive in the marketplace. Artists are business people, and the arts and cultural industry in Gaithersburg grows stronger every year. According to the 2015 Arts and Economic Prosperity Study produced by Americans for the Arts, Gaithersburg art producers and arts and culture audiences had an eighteen-point-seven-million-dollar impact on the local economy. One of the toolkit's goals is to help artists achieve economic stability. As you can see from the action steps, staff with input from the arts community are creating a toolkit that provides training, resources, mentoring, and networking. For the last two years, the committee has explored the development of a large performing arts venue. We collected information about the current inventory of cultural facilities within a twenty-mile radius of Gaithersburg and the facility needs of small-to-midsized organizations that typically rent perform in space. We considered potential facility partners that would make a purpose-built venue sustainable. As we sought to understand the niche that a Gaithersburg venue could serve, we found not answers but more questions. Does the city want a concert hall or an eighteen-hundred-seat proscenium stage suitable for traveling Broadway shows, or a five-thousand-seat major entertainment center? Who is the audience we hope to su, to serve, and who are the best potential partners? Our research indicated that the ideal venue would be in the four-hundred-to-five-hundred-seat range, yet we know that the county needs a much larger venue, one that can serve MCPS's graduation ceremonies and will also establish Gaithersburg, the third-largest city in Maryland, as a major entertainment hub. Reconciling these two different needs goes beyond the scope of this committee, and thus we respectfully urge the mayor and council to consider securing a professional consulting firm to address this important topic. In closing, the Cultural Arts Advisory Committee has five strategic goals for 2020. Number one, recruit new members for the committee that represent a broad cross-section of the community and art and culture. Two, guide the arts-in-public-places program by serving as reviewers for projects and making recommendations that will solidify Gaithersburg's reputation as a progressive city with a strong arts presence. Three, continue to meet with artists and businesses to develop the Arts Enterprise Toolkit. Four, advocate for the cultural arts goals presented in the master plan. And five, liaise with G-Park's Alliance for Arts and Culture to support the city's artistic endeavors and with other city committees to expand reach and service to the community. Thank you for your attention, and I'd love to answer any questions you may have.
Thank you, John. I want to first express my appreciation to you and your fellow committee members, and then to you personally, because I, I really appreciate Best Medicine Rep. and all your doing there.
Our Christmas show closes next weekend.
And it's amazing.
Absolutely. Plug, plug away. I, I am so excited about the, that we're down, now to two artists for the Y-Site project, and I'm excited about the banners and I'm excited about the pedestrian bridge, and I don't know, I think Dennis had mentioned, when we were talking about it, an entrance sign to Gaithersburg on, on the bridge of three fifty-five.
I'm, I'm rolling that into the Y-Site. I just didn't have the room to talk about it today.
Yeah, I just, it's, it makes me so happy that, I just want to see these things come to fruition. Love it. I, I think it's, you know, a, a venue has been on everybody's wish list for a long time. I, we're, we're looking for the right opportunity. There have been times where developers have, have come in early to talk to us about potential projects, and I've said, you know, as part of the project, can we get some sort of space, you know, some sort of performing arts space? So far, you know, we, we haven't gotten there, but, but maybe our time is coming. We're certainly looking for those opportunities, so. Who'd like to go next? Ryan?
Mike, look like you want to go first.
Well, I was, you know, I'm the liaison.
You're the liaison.
I'm the liaison.
They go first.
I'm the first of the liaison.
Thank you, thank you, my friend. It was an amazing presentation, so thank you very much for that. It's been a pleasure to work with this committee and to see it grow and to see it kind of evolve into what we have now. I think the, the project and the plans that we have going forward are just like everything else that we do in the city. They're forward-looking and taking advantage of, of some of the, of what we have here, both in terms of diversity of the community, but also diversity of the artistic community as well. So I like the, I think the list of projects is, is pretty impressive. We've got a lot to go on. One of the things that we talked about in, in our meetings and, and other times even up here is a, is a mural project or various surfaces, vertical surfaces throughout the city that could be used for murals, and I think that pride, pride of place is something that goes along with murals. And so we, I think in, in particular Old Town, we want to look at some of those places underneath Father Cuddy Bridge, that kind of stuff. So I know those are on the, they all, kind of on the, the drawing board, so to speak. And so I think we need to continue to talk about that, but it also engage the community in some of these ideas, because a lot, if you look at places in the country where this has been done, it actually started from the community rather than from, you know, a city initiative or something like that. So, anyway, we've got a lot of exciting plans, and hopefully they'll all, will all go, come to fruition. I think the most, the, the one to look forward to is the, the Y-Site and also the entrance to, to the city and that overpass at Shady Grove. So, anyway, thank you for your, your work. We still need to grow the committee, and there's certainly opportunities there for people to participate that, in that, I think, and then linking, as, as you have in the, as the committee has done in the last couple of years, linking to the other committees, in particular, looking at how this whole effort is related to the economic development and business development of the city is pretty important. And I think, you know, talking about the large venues is just one example of how that works. So, anyway.
Ryan?
Thank you. First, let me congratulate John on the professional narration of the presentation. It was, dare I say, Cronkite-esque.
It was amazing.
But, but aside from the narration, it's really the substance of your presentation that I think makes the case for these committee presentations every year, because I must confess, I learned of a number of initiatives during your presentation tonight that I didn't know about, or that I knew about, but I didn't know that they had made so much progress on since the last time I'd heard about them. So, it's really great. And as the, as the mayor often says, you know, any place can be a collection of roads and houses, but it's the culture and the richness of the culture that makes a place a city and a community, and whether it's the type of culture reflected in a book festival or the type of physical culture reflected in the investment in the arts, and these kinds of installations which last generations and which are there with staying power for people to see and enjoy for, for a long time, that's really what helps make us a city and a community. And the things that you're doing are very exciting, and my thanks to the entire committee and to the staff for working on these things. I'm looking forward to seeing many of them come to fruition in the near future, maybe cutting some ribbons on, on some of these. I will say that I had occasion recently with my children to, to visit the new park in downtown Crown. My nine-year-old son sat there and read every single quote on the, on the floor of the, of the park installation, and we had a really nice, long discussion about what each of them meant, and that's exactly the point of installations like that. So it's really a great contribution to our city. Thank you.
Lori Anne?
Thank you, mayor. So I, I too want to echo my colleagues. Thank you for a wonderful presentation. I too learned a lot in this presentation. I know that the mayor and Mike mentioned the artwork that will come to welcome people to the city of Gaithersburg. I also wanted to highlight the crossings in Old Town. The backside of the building would just be the perfect backdrop for, you know, a mural to talk about, you know, the history of the city, and, you know, I like to call Old Town the heartbeat of our city, and want to make sure that we can really preserve, you know, something significant to really highlight what Gaithersburg is and what it's becoming. And I like the installations that, you know, they are very timeless and very innovative, and some are looking very futuristic, and, you know, as we continue to grow and evolve as a city, I want to ensure that we're preserving some of the historical significance and the history of the city. And so any way that we can incorporate that, and we've been mentioning it all night, collaborating with other committees, the Cultural Advisory Committee, I love the idea of the Economic Development Committee. I'm sure the businesses, they have sculptures and installations in their own, at their own places of business, and so speaking with them about ideas and really getting a sense of community input. I see that the artists that you're using aren't from here, and so it would be nice to highlight any local artists that we may have who could really contribute to the city. I can't remember, I think it's Interfaith Works. They do a quilting project, and they work with a local artist right here from the city of Gaithersburg who does quilts, and so we have so many talented people here in the city, and so seeing some of their work come out would be interesting to see, so. But thank you for the amazing work, and have to learn more about the theater that's at the Lake Forest Mall. I keep hearing such great things about it. It's a hidden gem. So thank you both.
Thank you.
Neil?
So again, great, thanks for the presentation. As Ryan said, I, I learned a lot from, about, particularly about future plans. I'll tell you, one of the really great things about the city is just visiting different parts of the city and stumbling across artwork that you didn't expect to see there and, and really enjoying that. It's, it's important to give it, the city a sense that it's more than just a collection of buildings and, and shops and people, but there's something more to it, especially things that are more permanent like that. And it's great to see about some of the new, the new proposed projects, including the, the art for the pedestrian bridge. We were, I know some of the neighbors were commenting, looking for some way to dress that up, so that's a great one, as well as the other projects that you talked about. I'm fascinated by the work that you've done looking for a performing arts venue. You know, your own organization may have had some motivation, motivating help on that one, but it's something that has been discussed here at council and among city residents for some time about how nice it would be to have such a venue, but nobody's quite known how to, how to move it forward and make something happen, and as you've seen, what size would be appropriate for the city. It would be great to have a large venue where we could have graduations. We would need some sort of public transit improvement, I think, in order to make that feasible. So I think I'd love to see what data that you've gathered and see what we can do to move it to the next step. So thank you for, for all your good work. Look forward to seeing the new art as it, as it is unveiled and, and stumbling across more of it. It's important. Thank you.
All right. Do we have anybody in the audience who'd like to comment or question? Okay, not seeing any? Well, thank you all very much. Very exciting stuff indeed. We will now move on to our G-Park update with Mary Phalig, who is the chair, and Shelley, you are staying right where you are.
I am. So I'm going to hop up real quick and take these up here.
Well, that's a hard act to follow. He was very hard.
No, you just got to fund everything now.
Yes, you guys got a lot to fund.
Exactly.
And get your radio voice going, too.
Yeah. Here you go.
Elocution.
Can I stand up and perform?
Just be amazing. That's what the theme is tonight.
We actually, G-Park is actually marvelous.
Yeah. Marvelous.
It is. Amazing. It's amazing.
Marvelous.
See you all. I'm Mary Phalig, as you know, but I'm the chair of the Gaithersburg Arts Parks and Recreation Corporation Board. As we all know, it's called G-Park. And Gaithersburg has been my home since nineteen ninety-six. Other roles I've served in the community have been as the chair of the Kettmans Community Foundation, on the Parish Council of St. Rosa Lima, and for, on the board of Interfaith Works. But I'm delighted here tonight to be talking about the, the accomplishments and the activities of G-Park. So as you know, last year, G-Park was a, was formally established by resolution one year ago this month. G-Park grew out of the Gaithersburg Arts and Monuments Funding Corporation, a 501(c)(3) charitable organization with the dual purpose of increasing awareness of the city's revitalization and arts initiatives and raising funds for those programs and initiatives. GAMFIC, as this organization was called, was established in 2004 and acted as a judiciary agent for seven Friends groups. In 2018, staff and board members decided to expand GAMFIC's focus to include the growing needs of the city's parks and recreation programs. And then after a year of reimagining GAMFIC, and with the assistance of the city's attorney's office, GAMFIC became, began the formal process of transitioning to G-Park. The resolution to create G-Park and confirmed its first board members was approved last year, December third, on nineteen, twenty nineteen, 2018. So the mission of the newly-formed G-Park is to support the parks, arts, and recreation initiatives by promoting awareness of, of what the city offers, by engaging public and private partnerships to expand and enhance those offerings, and by managing and guiding the Friends groups that raise resources for these offerings. The board currently has eight members and can include as up, can include as many as fifteen. Members can serve at at large or represent one of the three affinity areas, parks, arts, and recreation. I serve as the chairperson of the governing board and the Alliance for Arts and Culture. Bridget Ryder will chair the Alliance for Recreation and Tracy Rulo will chair the Alliance for Parks. Longtime treasurer Trony Glander retired this year from the board, but Rich Stang will assume the role of treasurer for GAMFIC. I'm sorry for G Park, oops. Over the past year, we have yes, I'm a transition one. Over the past year, we have worked to identify additional board members and are pleased to welcome four new at-large members. We have Mike Chorus. He's the director of Safety, Health, and Environment at AstraZeneca. Steve Lynn, Director of the CCACC Adult Day Healthcare Center. Stuart Barr, Land Use and Zoning Attorney for Lurch Early and Brewer. And Oscar Alvaranga, Summit Hall PTA President and Member of Montgomery County Council of Parent Teacher Association. So what does G Park two do? We kind of have four focus areas. We grow capacity. We leverage the city and community resources and expertise for the parks, arts, and recreation that impact all of Gaithersburg. It's a vehicle for civic participation through hands-on volunteerism, collaboration with local businesses and educational agencies. People come together to make Gaithersburg an even greater place to live and work. G Park unites and organizes streamlined efforts. We unite and organize the city's support efforts for the parks, arts, and recreation under one umbrella organization, and then sustain the resources by formalizing the fundraising efforts and and tools in a transparent manner. G Park centralizes the coordination of initiatives with the city's overall planning activities and with other like-minded organizations. Again, the collaboration. All right. So how do we operate? G Park's led by a governing board, which I which I just referred to, which has supervision over three special interest groups that we call alliances. The governing board advises the alliances and provides oversight and guidance on policies and procedures procedural requirements. So the board has responsibility for governing the programmatic, financial, and legal activities of G Park, for approving the activities of the alliance and Friends groups, and for reporting on G Park activities to you all. The board composition includes representative on representation on each alliance, as well as individuals not associated not associated with alliance but are contributing who are brought to the board because they bring a specific expertise or perspective. At the next level are the alliances. These are the activators, people with a keen a keen interest in one of the areas, parks, arts, or recreation. They manage and guide the Friends groups and liaise with other like-minded community groups. The alliance boards ensure Friends groups are implementing the goals and objectives as defined in the parks, 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 recreation, and culture element of the city's master's plan. And they are following up on all the applicable policies and guidelines. Then there are the doers, the people who are the passionate about and involved in a specific activity. These are the Friends groups, like the Gaithersburg Chorus. They raise and manage funds that support particular activities. For example, the chorus provided scholarships to offset tuition costs for eligible chorus participants, and the chorus underwrites the cash awards of the vocal category winner for the vocal category winners of the Young Artist Award Competition. The Friends groups operate operate under a set of established guidelines from the governing board in support of the city programs, projects, events, and initiatives. There are currently seven Friends groups established under G Park. All in all of these, except for the Gaithersburg Senior Senior Center Funding Corporation or the Benjamin Gaither Center, fall under the auspices of the Alliance for the Arts and Culture. The senior center funding is under the Alliance for Recreation. The governing board and the city staff are meeting to identify potential goals and objectives outlined in the master plan that require support for parks and recreation, and then the funding committees to meet those goals will be established as they are identified. So in much has been accomplished in 2019, but I kind of want to say it was our it's our build year. We've done, you know, it's been about establishing a new organization with the new bylaws and articles of incorporation. We've held meetings since last January to identify potential candidates for the board and alliances. We've recruited four new members and identified several others for the alliances. I want to comment, the board took advantage of a training training offered by the Americans for the for the arts on diversification. And yes, we met with the multicultural committee. Both Tracy and I attended their meetings for guidance. We're one of those that took advantage of their expertise. We had we held a retreat in August to flesh out all the purpose roles and responsibilities because it's that infrastructure that we're building that's so imperative. And the Friends groups raised $27,313 to support the city programs, including the chorus, the Gaithersburg Community Museum, and the Gaithersburg Book Festival. Existing funds from G Park were used to support the Arts Barn and the Arts and Public Places. Lastly, we created recruitment materials, which we can share with you, for G Park's governing board and alliances. In closing, G Park has five strategic goals for 2020. We've complete we've complete the membership of the we're completing the membership of the governing board, which includes electing officers and ensuring that there's a chair and two co-chairs, at least one chair and our two co-chairs for each alliance. And we will continue to develop the alliances. And in February, we're planning a meet and greet for a potential potential new members. The city's attorney is working to is working to register G Park with the state and the IRS, which we hope will conclude soon. And board members and staff will work with the alliances to identify actionable actionable priority goals and initiatives. And then lastly, through individual advocacy, the work of the board and the alliances, G Park will promote awareness of the resources and needs of the city's parts arts and recreation programs and services. That's what we're up to. Can I answer any questions?
Well done. Thank you very much, Mary.
Marvelous and amazing.
Yes. Actually, I I don't know if I have any to add to that. Marvelous and amazing.
Marvelous and amazing. I'll write that down.
We appreciate what you're doing. It's important. We need to we need to fund these things. They don't they don't happen for free, Lord knows. And and they're important for for building our our community. So questions, comments?
I'll just make a quick comment and then have a question. First, you know, we certainly understand that this is a transition period for the organization and the different affiliate groups within the organization. And so we understand that a lot of what you're reporting on at this point is governance and internal, you know, organizational matters. But this is all very necessary as a building block, as you said, Mary, to be able to be in a position to finish this up in the coming year and then sort of pivot to the operation once you've got all this infrastructure in place. So we certainly understand you're doing a lot of work that isn't necessarily the sexiest part
I don't have pretty pictures.
Of supporting, you know, the mission of the organization, but it's vital. And and we appreciate, you know, the the sort of yeoman's work that's necessary to get all of this stuff in place so that we can be successful in the future, both from volunteers and the staff who are working on all of this. I did have a question about how the Friends groups fit under the org chart of of G Park. Are they are they just sort of informally identified categories of of different areas that we support financially? Are they separate accounts, funding accounts that we actually allocate funds for separately as they are raised? So someone might want to donate specifically to the book festival funding committee or specifically to the Arts Barn Funding Committee. How does that work? Shelley, maybe that's a question for you. I don't know.
So I think we have seven funding committees right now. Those are the Friends groups. So in the past, we've used that term funding committee, but we're moving to Friends. Each of them has an account in our bank account. So when we're raising funds for, if you remember the art trains and we raised funds for that, there was an art train which became the Public Art Fund, and all the money was funneled into there. And it's all tracked separately.
Got it.
When the chorus does a fundraising activity, then the money comes into GAMFIC, G Park, and it goes into their bucket. So they all know how much money they have and what they can and can't spend it on.
Okay. Could someone also give an undesigned donation that then either
We don't have
Either the board or staff would be able to figure out how to allocate that, or you don't have
At the moment, no. We don't have a plate. We don't have a bucket for that.
Got it.
And this is something we've been trying to sort of figure out. The the things that are currently in there came about because someone said we need a vehicle to manage the donations.
Right.
But as we're now looking forward, as my colleagues, Asante, who's must have already gone, Carolyn, and Michelle and I, we're all kind of looking at that master plan and what are the next things that we're going to need to help raise awareness of, find resources for, and then perhaps there's a fundraising component. So for instance, Mary brought on board the Friends of the Money Branch Alliance. They're an incredible organization that we'll be able to work with. That's leveraging the community resources, engaging. I don't know if there'll be any need to come up with a funding vehicle for it, but we'll be doing joint programs.
Okay.
Does that kind of help?
It does. And then from a governance perspective, these funding committees are populated separately from the governing board and the alliance, or are they subcommittees of the alliances?
I think they're subcommittees.
Okay, all right. That sort of helps me understand a little bit. So then it all sort of follows up to the governing board ultimately to kind of approve some of these decisions?
Yes.
Okay.
But it goes through the alliance to the to the board. And the point is that we're trying to stay aligned as, you know, stay aligned with the master plan.
Sure.
Stay aligned with best practices and procedures. And and I will just make a comment about the board, of the yeoman's effort of the board is that we did do, we have been very thoughtful. We got a very comprehensive matrix of who we need for what. And I have been attending the economic development meetings for because we talked about that earlier, about making sure that and thank you, Neil made the introduction so that I could kind of represent that effort to this governing board. And you can see, you know, AstraZeneca, the Chinese community, and the senior, you know, just a very broad, both both in terms of their expertise and their perspective, who they represent.
Great.
So that we can give provide expertise to every to all the different Friends groups.
Sure. Thank you. That's all I have.
Neil.
So I know that it's really still in its youth, this new organization, but you've done a really good job pulling a team together. I know most of the people on your board and you know, it's it's an impressive group of people who actually will do work, which is wonderful. You just referred to the fact that you put a matrix together of what you need. You might want to share that with us. We kind of know people.
Great.
So if we can be helpful.
Speak for yourself.
Okay, I'll speak for myself if I can be helpful. I know Ryan's busy with other things.
No, I meant I don't know anybody.
Right.
Great, thank you.
But, you know, it's 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 important work that that we would like to see expand to its full potential. So whatever we can do to help.
And I we are going to have an event in February where we're start. I'm starting to tell people to come and learn about it at the Arts Barn, to, you know, to learn. So people, somebody like a Sally Marsa Salt isn't ready for a serum on the board, but she's like, I'd like to be involved. And I said, well, come choose one of the alliances. And what level do you want to be involved? So we're starting to talk that up. And so I'll make sure you all know about that and then extend the invitation.
Great. Thanks. Mike.
I think one of the most important things about about having this is that we now have a formal way to basically accept gifts to support arts and culture and recreation. And those donors can be assured that we actually have a process and a system for how that would be managed. They can be confident, be put to good use. So, you know, you're putting flesh on the bones of this right now. It's a I think the structure is pretty strong. The organizational structure is pretty strong. Certainly, based on a lot of models and observations of what other organizations have done, but I think this is a great start. And they're just the, you know, the upside of this is tremendous. And I think that's that's what we're looking forward to. So you saw our list of projects. So, you know,
Yeah.
Your work cut out for you.
I know. I like the murals.
Yeah. And I and I think it actually might be, one consideration, you talked about the seven clusters or groups, then it might be appropriate to also have something that's just an undesigned fund for, as as Ryan brought up, too. I think that someone can just make a unrestricted gift or donation to the to G Park for the purpose of, you know, maintaining the culture and arts in the in the community.
Okay. So thank you, ladies, for the wonderful presentation. You've come a long way from the first initial formation of the organization since the transition. I really like the governing board makeup now that there are different alliances focused on, you know, certain areas. And I like that we're collaborating more with our other committees. I'm excited to see that the Cultural Affairs Committee is having the one-day conference. And I don't know how you guys can collaborate on helping that come to life, whether it's through the sponsorships, collaborating on sponsorships, or the programs that would be seen there. So, you know, we have so many resources within our committees. And so it's just great to see that we now have a funding mechanism to see all of these projects come to life and anything that we can do to help support this mission, to get the word out, as Neil mentioned, to talk about the different ways the money is being spent. And we just had Giving Tuesday. And so ways that we can better support those efforts that you guys are already doing would be good for us to know. So let us know how we can further highlight what you guys are doing.
Great, thank you.
Thank you.
Do we have anybody who'd like to comment? I thought Michelle was sort of looking at me like, when do I get my chance to comment?
Thank you. I just want to commend one Denise Kizer, Shelley Williams, and Mary Phalig. They've done a tremendous amount of work in the last year. So you heard that we just got the approval with a resolution a year ago this month. And a lot has been put into place to develop that framework and that structure. And I just wanted to go ahead and sort of give you a couple of more examples. So if someone does want to go ahead and provide money, and it is sort of undesigned staff, and the G Park board are going through the master plan, and we're developing a list of priorities of what we would like to fund. So not everything needs to be budgeted within the city's operating budget or capital budget. So a couple of things that have brought been brought up is, you know, it would be nice to have a new, more modern scoreboard at Kelly Park for the Gaithersburg Giants and the city's sports programs that are there on Kelly Park Field Number One. So that's a great initiative where you can partner with another nonprofit organization, the Gaithersburg Giants, and have a vehicle for fundraising mechanisms where people can go ahead and give to a specific purpose. Another initiative that came up is in April, the mayor council passed a resolution for the city to be a play ball city. So we would like to go ahead and partner with the local schools, PTSAs, the Gaithersburg Giants again, and put together like an after-school baseball program and some other programs for after-school programming, again, that doesn't need to constantly hit the city's operating budget, but people will want to go ahead and partner and provide funding for. So those are just a couple of other examples. But this is a great vehicle for partnerships and fundraising.
Thank you. Any other comments or questions? Okay. Thank you guys so much.
Thank you.
Thank you.
We're here to help and we're wishing you luck and we're all we're all in this together.
And we've provided you with information over here. Michelle told me to put it over here.
Okay.
About G Park and the alliances.
It's a doc. It's a it's a one pager that we're handing out to people to kind of give them a framework. We call it our Create Interest Document.
Excellent. Okay. Well, thank everyone for being here this evening. Our next the next meeting of the mayor and council will be a week from today. I'm looking up the date of that, which would be on Monday, December 16. And until then, remind everyone that we have winter lights is going on and hope everyone can can get out there for it. And until next time, let's do great things, Gaithersburg. We are adjourned.